Thursday, March thirteenth, Planning Commission meeting now in order. First item on the agenda is establishment of a quorum. Have. Second is approval of the agenda.
Move it be approved?
Second.
Requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
Patterson, aye.
Schmidt, aye.
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 Litton, aye.
Jones, aye.
Next is the consent agenda. The minutes of the regular meeting of January the ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Requires a motion.
Move it be approved as presented?
Second.
Next is the. All right, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The citizens' period. The citizens' period is now open. And it doesn't look like we have any citizens that wish to speak. So we'll now close the citizens' period. Moving on to other business. The adoption of the Withfield Planning Commission rules of procedure. And I think all of those were in our packet the last time. And they should have been reviewed, and that will require a motion.
I'll move that we accept the Planning Commission rules of procedure as presented.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Good, aye.
Patterson, aye.
Schmidt, aye.
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 Litton, aye.
Hey, Jones, aye.
Next item. Consider a public hearing for Thursday, April the tenth at six P. M. Or as soon thereafter to consider the application of Mr. Michael Waller for a special exception permit to allow a home stay use in M one industrial zoning district and to approve a parking requirement deviation for the Better Way Building located at thirteen forty West Main Street. Requires a motion and vote. This is only setting the hearing.
I'll make a motion to consider the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So next, review of the United Development Ordinance, the U D O resources.
Welcome, everybody, and thank you for attending tonight. We have heard from several Planning Commission members that we're going to try to have a shortened meeting tonight, not go too long. So if that's the pleasure of this Planning Commission, I will certainly try to make this as expedient and efficient as possible. Anything that we do not get a chance to discuss tonight, we can carry over to our April meeting. So just know that we don't, honestly, it's just open discussion for tonight. We don't really have to make any decisions on anything. So the first item here that I want to go over with you is some resources. And earlier, I believe it was in February, we sent each of you an email with a link to these resources online, but I just want to quickly go over that again. For those of you who may not know, if you want to get to the information regarding the U D O, you're going to go to departments. And then you are going to go to the Planning Commission or Planning Department right here. It'll say at the top of the page. And right there at the top, and this is also a resource that you can tell citizens or anybody who is concerned about the U D O, everybody can get to this. We will always upload our most recent draft of the U D O here. So if you click on that link, you'll see Draft Six, which we will look at later this evening. Since the last meeting, we did the summary of changes since the last draft U D O, and Brandy printed that for each of you. You should have that in front of you. Again, this document will be updated as changes are made to the U D O. And then the last document here is the zoning district comparisons, and that is the other document that has the headline in green at the top. And we will also go over that this evening. So does anybody have any questions about these resources or how to get to them? Okay, if you have any questions after tonight, you can always call us. And that was all for that agenda item.
You draft six of the U D O?
Okay, this is, this item here, we're actually going to look at some of these documents. So let's, first of all, let's look at the one that says summary of U D O changes for Draft Six. I will go through this in whatever detail the Planning Commission would desire for tonight. We could either go through them line by line, or if you want, I can summarize some of the major changes. So what is the pleasure of the Planning Commission tonight?
Think so, rise.
Summarize, is that okay with everybody, to hit some of the major points? Okay, so starting at the top, the major change that we made since the last draft, and I did contact each of you over phone, and we all agreed to do this, was to remove the nine new zoning districts. That is a major change since the last revision. We did make that to try to simplify the U D O and to try to make it easier to understand for the citizens, and also hopefully to make it more efficient to get this thing approved in two thousand twenty-five. So when I say remove the nine new zone districts, these were the planned zone districts that did not exist anywhere on the landscape. They were just in paper format only, and they were some of the more creative zone districts, as you can recall that John Woods went over with each of you. So if the Planning Commission is still okay with that, staff would continue to recommend that we remove those nine new zone districts from the document. Is everybody still okay with that idea?
Yes.
Okay, all right. The next major change we made was, of course, removing all the references to the new zoning districts. As you can remember, in some of the conditional use standards, you know, we had some of them called out by name, so we just removed all the references to them throughout the document. Further down the sheet, some of the hot topics we've been dealing with over the course of the last few years was accessory dwelling units. And at the last meeting, the Planning Commission decided that they wanted to remove that from all of the zone districts except for the historic residential where it will be shown as a special exception permit. And if you look at the most recent draft of the U D O, you will see that in the land use table, the change that you all, that you requested is reflected. So is the Planning Commission still agreeable to that major change, the U D O?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on down through the sheet, another major change was the Planning Commission wanted staff to restore the home stay use to R two, R three, and add it to the M one industrial zoning district, and also to remove the requirement for owner occupancy during rentals. And so again, staff listened to that suggestion, and we did amend the U D O to reflect that change. And is the Planning Commission still agreeable to that change?
Yes.
Yes.
Everybody still agreeable to that change? Okay, and we can go into the U D O and actually look at those changes here directly. On the next page. If you turn the page, the same little worksheet here. We removed accessory dwelling units as a conditional use in all residential zoning districts except the R H historic residential zone district. And the use was restored to the current standards, which requires a special use exception permit. Is everybody still okay with that change?
Yes.
Okay. We also restored the frontage requirements that are part of the current zone district standards, and all of the zone districts shown. And they reflect the frontage requirements that you have in the current zone district. Again, we can go in the document and look at some of those. Is everybody agreeable to that change?
Yeah.
Okay. We heard from at least one Planning Commission member that they wanted us to revisit the dumpster enclosure requirements to allow more flexibility for midsize businesses. And we did include just a caveat in that section in dumpsters. It pretty much says that if you have a midsize business and you want to request an exception to having a full-size dumpster, that you can do that. So that would be for certain businesses that don't generate a lot of trash, and we can look at that change later on tonight. We also heard at the last meeting that the Planning Commission wanted to restore the maximum building heights to the taller allowances of the existing ordinance. And we did reflect that change. Is everybody still agreeable to that?
Yes.
Okay. We heard from at least one Planning Commission member, and this was through the phone call, not at the meeting, that we wanted some more language about industrial chemical manufacturing or processing, just to make sure that we weren't inadvertently penalizing any existing industries that were doing any type of chemical processing. And so we did work on that definition, and we can look at that later tonight, what we did in that section. For the most part, most of the other changes that you see were items that staff sort of found as we've been working in the document, a lot of cleanup, a lot of adding definitions, but nothing really major content-based that would really affect any policy. But we can take a minute before we move on to the next topic and provide the Planning Commission with an opportunity to just talk about the summary of U D O changes. And if you have any questions or concerns, or you want to look at something in more detail, we can certainly do that this evening. So maybe we'll just, I'll just kind of call out everybody as we go around, just so we can make sure everybody's good. So Mr. Jones, how are you feeling about the summary of U D O changes, and is there anything that you have concerns about?
No concerns, and I'm fine with everything as.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Litton?
Just a quick review of it. I think if we're addressing all my items that I had sent to Mr. Woods a couple of months ago, so, and what we talked about, so need to probably look at it a little bit further.
Okay, certainly.
But yeah, I think it reaches the objective.
Okay, and again, we can continue this conversation into the April meeting, so I don't want anybody to feel like this is the absolute conversation here. Mr. Jones, is there anything that you want to bring up or have more discussion about?
No.
Okay.
You and I talked about it on the phone, and I also talked to John Woods about it.
Okay, thank you.
It's not something you want to discuss here.
Okay, understand. Ms. Anderson?
Have no concerns.
Mr. Schmidt?
You just talk about the summaries now?
Correct.
Okay, because I've got other stuff, but I'll bring that up. No, it's fine to the summaries.
Okay, sounds good. Patterson?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm reasonable.
All right, so with that being said, we'll go ahead and set this sheet to the side. And again, we will continue to revise this as additional changes are made. All right, so the next item that we are going to look at is the zone district standards. And it was requested of staff to try to do a simplified version on one sheet of paper that shows the differences between the current zoning ordinance and the proposed U D O. So what we tried to do was to simplify it, and I know we couldn't put some of the lengthy language that you see as written in the ordinance, but we really just wanted to show as much as possible apples to apples, the comparison. So let's start with agriculture zone district, and we'll just quickly go through each of these zone districts and provide time for you all to provide comments on anything that you wish to provide comments on. All right, so what I'm going to do for the purposes of the audience is I'm going to go ahead and pull this, actually, let me go here, because I think this is going to be better. Okay, I'll try to keep it updated up here for those in the audience. All right, so let's start with Ag Zone District. Do you guys want to go line by line, or do you want to just speak up if you see something that concerns you in the district?
Line by line is fine with me.
Okay. So the minimum lot size, in the current zoning ordinance, it calls out ten thousand square feet for single-family residential with public utilities and fifteen thousand square feet for homes that would use an onsite system. In the proposed U D O, we have the same standard for residential with public utilities. When we go to lots that are going to use onsite systems, we did include language in the U D O that reflects a meeting that we had with the Health Department about what is typically the lot sizes that they see for lots with onsite wells and septics. And so that's what informed the new U D O. And those are, those are much, not much larger, but they're more like thirty thousand square feet, not fifteen thousand. The comment that we heard from the Health Department is that it would be virtually impossible to try to get an onsite septic system on a lot, which is fifteen thousand square. So that sort of informed, and you'll see this carry over into several of the other residential zone districts. Does anybody have any concerns about number one? Okay, the second one is maximum density. In the current zoning ordinance, it allows a single-family or a two-family home, which is probably like a duplex. In the U D O, we have the same standard. Regarding building height, thirty-five to sixty-foot with stipulations, and the stipulations, if you remember that, it talks about the distance from the setback to the lot line, and it gets sort of wordy, but you know, the further that you get away, the taller you can get. And we sort of went with that same type of standard for the U D O. Everybody okay with that? All right, for the front yard minimum setback, these sections get very wordy. In the current zoning ordinance, we try to simplify it in the proposed U D O. The front yard setback is thirty feet are the average of setbacks of structures on the same block, but not less than twenty feet. Does anybody have any concerns about the front yard setback for Ag Zone District?
No.
No? Corner lot, side yard setbacks, again, we tried to simplify that. We went from the fifteen to twenty-seven feet with stipulations to the twenty-foot. Any concerns? The interior lot, side yard setbacks, again, fifteen to twenty-seven feet with stipulations, and we went to fifteen feet on that. For the rear yard setback, again, the twenty-five to thirty-seven feet, and in the new U D O, we went to twenty-five feet for rear yard setback. This is all for Ag Zone District. The accessory minimum setbacks, essentially the same. Does anybody have any issues with the accessory minimum setbacks? All right, and then the minimum structure separation, in the current zoning ordinance, there's no standard listed. In the proposed, we did provide some standards that reflect what is typically used in the building code and the fire code, which is to just, just to provide enough to provide access between structures for not only fire separation, but for, in the event there is a fire, the ability to pull hoses and things through the yard between structures. Does anybody have an issue with the minimum structure separation? Okay, and then with the floor area for dwellings, in the current zoning, it's six hundred and fifty square foot with a lot coverage of at least five hundred square foot. And then the proposed, we just put it as six hundred and fifty square. Minimum frontage, and again, this is something we just recently wrote back in. In the current zoning ordinance, it talks about ninety-foot at the setback line, and in the proposed, again, we kept the ninety-foot setback, but it would be at the street line. Everybody okay with Ag Zone District standards?
I think there's obviously, I mean, comparing this is great, but I mean, I didn't have time to go through every single zone district. The only one that I really looked at right now was the residential R one. And so I have more questions on that than I have, because I just need more time to go through all of this, because, I mean, it's great having that, the side by side, but it obviously doesn't include everything. If you go to the original ordinances compared to the new one, there definitely some differences there, not just what's stated on here, and I think there are things missing. So in my opinion, if we had just covered two zones in a meeting and go through it thoroughly, I'd be a lot more happy with that than, because this is great here, but there's still stuff missing. And I haven't even been through the agricultural zones check. I've only been through the R one, to be honest.
Okay.
So that's just my opinion.
Well, we can go into the zoning ordinance now and look at Ag if you want, and see how it's specifically written.
To be honest, I think, no, I think I'd need more time to go through the whole thing, because what I do is I print out the existing ordinances, and then I try and compare the new U D O to the existing, and I need time to go through it. I mean, you know, it takes a bit of time, and I've only done the R one.
Okay.
Because there's, like I said, it's a lot.
Yeah, I agree. Well, let's real quick then, let's stop right there and look at the, where I can show you guys, everybody, where the existing zoning ordinance is, in case you do want to look at that. If you go, again, if you go to the Planning Department, or you go anywhere to the town website, over here on the right-hand side, you'll see a link that says Document Central. And if you click on that, it's, this is all the documents that the town kind of uses that's available to the citizens, and you can go down here to zoning ordinance, and this is the existing zoning ordinance. We also have the existing subdivision ordinance here. So if you click on the zoning ordinance, you can go and you can look at Ag. Zone District. And any of the, any of the other zone districts. So if you click on Ag right here. This is the current zoning ordinance, and this is a little bit why it's hard to compare them, because if you remember, when we set out to do the U D O, we really wanted to improve the readability. And so with the proposed U D O, you're going to see, you're going to see a, and we'll go there to go over that again, but you're going to see a very abbreviated snapshot version of the regulations. You're not going to have all these words, because when this thing was written in the sixties, people read words. In two thousand and twenty-five, people, you don't, people's attention span, you don't, people don't read words like this anymore. They look at memes, they look at graphics, they look at images. And so as we designed the new U D O, we tried to modernize it for the current audience, our citizens. But if you look at the Ag Zone District, you're first going to have all these uses. Okay, and here's a pop quiz for you guys. Where are the land uses in the proposed U D O? They're in the land use table, right? Because remember, that was another thing we did. So by doing that, we greatly reduced the amount of pages that your zone district standards are. So in the proposed U D O, you're not going to have six pages for Ag Zone District. You're going to have two, right? And we'll look at that in a second. So this whole first section of the current zoning is just uses. But then when you get into area regs, you can see all this lengthy language, like what we're saying in the U D O with like one or two sentences, you've got five paragraphs here about area regs. Okay, same thing with setbacks, and this is why we're doing what we're doing. So with the setbacks, I mean, this is, this is all talking about how you're going to do your front setback, right? And read some of that. I just, you know, I encourage each of you to go in and read just how convoluted and complex this reads. Like right here, where there is no building on either side of the street, the setback shall not be less than thirty-five feet, provided that on a hillside street, if the natural slope of the ground on either side of the street and within a block is such that the average difference in elevation between the sidewalk grade and the lot grade, and it's a little bit like, huh, what? And so, you know, as much as I wanted to put all of that on your one pager, we couldn't do it as staff. So you are going to have to come in and take a deeper dive if you do want to truly compare the difference. So getting back to the proposed U D O, we're going to quickly go look at Ag Zone District, so you can see the difference. Okay, so here's our U D O. Over here on the right, we can get to some quick links here. So, and again, this is available on the website. You're going to go to Article Five, Zone District Standards. You can also probably get there from the Table of Contents. I know John was going to quick link those. If you click on Ag, let's see what happens. There we go. Okay, so this is your Zone District Standards for Ag in the proposed U D O. We've got our purpose statement. We say our permitted land uses are in the land use table. And then we've got our one page of Zone District Standards. So you can see that whole paragraph we saw in the zoning, the current zoning ordinance, when we're talking about primary building setbacks, we've got one sentence about how you measure the front, you know, one sentence on the corner side, one sentence on the interior side, and one sentence on the rear. And this is very much how we're trying to improve the readability of the proposed U D O. So does that explain, Dave, what the challenges are and?
Sure, and like I said, I think it'd be good if we just went through one or two zones. Like I said, just give us time to go through so we can make notes and that sort of stuff, and then come back and talk about these things, because.
Okay.
I mean, it's obviously a lot easier on the U D O to read and stuff, but I also don't want to leave anything out of the ordinances that we have here, because that's basically what's made the town, are these existing ordinances. So it's just to make sure that we don't leave anything out and that we've covered everything. Yeah, there's some things that we do want to change, but there's stuff in there that I think we need to have a look at in detail, in my opinion, anyway. So, I mean, it's very easy to go through the sheet here and compare little bits, but I think there's still stuff in there that is missing, that in my opinion, that I think I need to have a look at. So, you know, just tackling two zones at a time is good for me. I don't know about everyone else, but it just gives me time to go through everything.
Okay, is there anything that staff can do to make it easier for you?
Not really, because I can go on there, and I've already done it, where I go and I pull up the old ordinances and the new U D O, and I compare it that way. So no, the only thing that, that, you know, when we have a meeting, maybe if we had the printout, but I can do that myself on the old ordinances to the new one, so I can compare it that way and bring it to the meeting. But that's the only difference for me, but otherwise, no, I can have a look myself on that.
Okay, well, we certainly can do that. We can schedule two for the next meeting and just print you out the current zoning and keep updating the sheet. We're also going to try to do something similar with the uses to help you guys analyze those as well. So we'll, we'll spend as much time as you all want to make sure everybody feels comfortable with the changes, and we will amend anything that you would like to be amended.
Right.
So with that being said.
Line, excuse me. If I heard him correctly, he's, he's already looked at R one.
Okay.
And he has fresh questions.
Okay.
That, that was the next, I think that's the next on the agenda, I believe.
So is this, we're only going to look at these two? All right.
I mean, we can look at more, but like I said, for me, I think it's, you know, I just need more time to go through each zone to compare it, you know, thoroughly, in my opinion, anyway.
Okay.
So I've been through R one, that's all I already had time for to go through, but.
Okay, absolutely.
And I mean, I would have done more, but unfortunately, I was, I was away on vacation. I'm sorry.
It's okay, we understand. You guys are all very busy. You have lives outside of this commission, so we will take as much time as you all need to feel good about this document.
No, I just, since he's got fresh questions, I just, I think we need to address them tonight.
Absolutely, yes, and I will do the best I can. I will tell you that your subject matter expert is not here tonight. Mr. Woods is your subject matter expert, but I will do what I can to help facilitate the conversation and translate any desires that you all have. Okay, so let's look at R one, shall we? And I will just go ahead and scroll down to R one since we're so close here. All right, so if everybody wants to turn your page to the summary for R one on this sheet right here, the green sheet. All right, so let's go through these one by one. All right. So let's go through these one by one. Get this over here. Okay, so minimum lot size, very similar to agriculture, agriculture. Um, we kept the ten thousand square feet in the U D O and we tried to reflect what the health department said about what size lots they think may be required for onsite septic and onsite wells. Um, is everybody okay with the lot sizes for R1s?
Um, why did it increase from the fifteen thousand to thirty thousand when there's no sewer and water?
Okay. So very early in this process, and we could probably go back through the minutes, and this would have been right when we started discussing the U D O because it was one of the first things we did. Um, development staff met with the Mount Rogers Health District representatives. Um, Stacy Tuck Holliday, you probably know him. Um, and we just discussed with them what typical lot sizes they see in this area with our soils and our rock. There's a lot of rock in Withville um, for onsite septics and wells. And we, we reflected the standards that they thought worked well for this area. Um, one thing I guess to note with that is for any lot that's already created, it's a lot on record. So if they can get a health department permit to put an onsite septic or an onsite well on there, that lot's already created. Okay? If someone's creating new lots, they're going to have to submit a subdivision plat through our subdivision ordinance. And you, the planning commission, would probably review that as a major subdivision. Typically, at the time of the lot creation, they also have to submit the paperwork for the Virginia Department of Health that shows that they can accommodate an onsite septic or an onsite well. So even though we listed the standards, you're very much at the um, the review of the V D H for those lot sizes. And so that's, that's why we went with that new standard. Did you want to leave it at fifteen thousand square feet?
No, I think if, if it was, if that's recommended by the health department, then I would stay with that. I was just asking why it was changed, that's all.
Okay. Does anybody else have any concerns about that? No? Okay. Well, let's move to number two then. The maximum residential density. Um, so all throughout the current zoning ordinance, you're not going to see much about density. There's not much in there. So what we did was we tried to include some language about density in the new U D O. John put here that functionally about four units per acre, and that probably has to do with the, the floor area at the bottom. Is everybody okay with item number two?
I am. I just had another question on the maximum dwelling unit density. It said in the new U D O, it's a one single family home subject to conditional use standards, one accessory dwelling unit per parcel. I thought dwelling units were removed.
You're talking about R1?
No, I'm talking about the U D O.
Okay, but we are looking at R1.
Yes, ma'am, for R1.
Where are you at? I'm sorry.
Uh, I think you can, you may be able to pull it up on the screen there. Be under the, the new ordinances.
I think it means in the actual ordinance you have.
The U D O, it's in the U D O there.
But it's not on this sheet?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Do you want to go to the land use table and look at that?
I've got land use table here as well.
Okay.
But uh, like I said, there was nothing in the land use table. It shows no U D Os, but it's not in your U D O that you've still got the, the one accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, let's go to, let's go to land use table and look at that together, shall we?
Land use table is not in there. It's correct. R1.
He's talking about the actual U D O.
Yeah.
Yeah, the actual new.
Yeah, let's go to that. That's what I'm saying. Let's go to that. Okay, we're going to go to this one. And we're going to go to Article Six.
Could be in Article Five there, but.
Well, it'll be in the land use table.
Yes, ma'am. But they don't, they, they don't match up.
Okay, let's go to here first. Okay. Land uses. All right. Accessory dwelling units is the concern.
And it's been taken out there.
Okay, so here's accessory dwelling units. And in the current draft of the, of the U D O, it's only allowed by spec- special exception permit, I think in the R historical.
The RH, yes.
Yeah.
That's great.
Okay. But you're saying it doesn't line up in?
If you go back to the uh,
R1?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you have to tell me where you're seeing it.
Okay. Um, is that for R1 right there? There?
Maximum dwelling unit density, one single family home is subject to, okay, yeah. So this was probably just an oversight on John's part.
Okay.
When he went in to take all that out, he probably just didn't change it. So I will make sure that he changes that.
Okay. Um, the other thing I want to find out is obviously in the existing ordinances, it mentions garages and carports. Where is that in the new U D O?
Garages and carports?
Yes, ma'am.
Garages and carports are an accessory structure.
Accessory structure.
Yep. And if you go to definitions, well, let's, do you want to look at the land use table and see where it's referenced in the land use table first? Okay, let's do that first. Okay, so again, we're going to go back to Article Six. Land use table. And I'm sorry, y'all, I am not as fast as John is. All right, land use table. Okay, so the very first use is accessory structures and uses, and they are allowed conditionally in all zone districts.
Right.
Okay. So let's go to the definitions, which is your last article in the U D O. Okay, accessory dwelling, or excuse me, accessory accessory structures. Okay. A subordinate building or structure customarily incidental to and located upon the same or adjacent lot occupied by the primary use building or structure and which is not attached by any part of a common wall or roof to the main building. Accessory structures, which are commonly used for purposes related to Ag residential, Commercial, Industrial Uses as shown and delineated in the land use table, shall be considered and allowed use. So essentially, what we would call an accessory structure for most residential uses are carports, garages, sheds, playhouses. What else do we see in Withville?
Um, w- w- because in the existing ordinances, it said obviously with the garages are normally attached to the houses.
Mm-hmm.
And obviously in the new U D O, it, we're not requiring that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the option of the landowner. They, if they attach anything to the house, it becomes part of the primary structure.
Right.
As you know, with the building code, that's how they treat it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it's detached, then it's a detached accessory structure.
Because they didn't permit detached garages before in the original ordinances, did they?
I don't know. Good question.
Okay. They didn't. I didn't think so. That's why I'm just trying to compare it all here. That's all.
Okay. Our, so I guess let's stop there for a minute and have a conversation about that. And your residential zone districts that we see here in Withville are one, are two, are three. Or do, does this planning commission feel that garages, carports, sheds, any type of detached accessory structure should be allowed in all of those zone districts?
Sorry, what do you, I'm sorry, Elaine.
I guess what I'm trying to say is how do you all feel about that?
Okay.
Like, do, I mean, from where I come from, I'm like, why not? You know, everybody wants a garage, everybody wants a storage shed. But if you feel otherwise, I mean, we need to have a conversation about that.
No, I don't have a problem with it. Like I said, I'm just trying to compare the one with the other one. And I don't have a problem with it being detached either. I don't know what everyone else feels about it, but I don't have a problem with it. I was just, like I said, I'm just comparing it. That's all.
Okay. Does anybody else have an issue with that?
I have seen instances where accessory structures have been needed in the side yard. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, they aren't permitted in the side yard.
Correct.
Uh, I don't know that needs to be changed or not. I, I mean, I've seen instances where it would make perfect sense to change it. But I can also see where it would be a hindrance in other locations.
Okay. Well, let's do this. Let's go to the conditional use section because that's probably where remember how on the land use table it was a conditional use? The, probably in those conditions is where we're going to see some of those details about where it can be. And I'm sure you all remember, because we've been at this for a long time, but do you remember for all the conditional uses when John, we would have the meetings and John would come in with the PowerPoint presentations with like a batch of conditional uses? And we would go through like three or four in one meeting. So we've been over this. It's probably just been so long, we can't what we, what we talked about. Um, but I know we did go over that conditional use back when we were going through all of the conditional uses. Um, all right, guys, bear with me. I'm almost there, I think. Wait a minute. Yeah, it's Article Eight. Okay. So Article Eight is conditional uses. There's your conditional uses for accessory dwelling units. And probably next is accessory, accessory structures. Okay, here's our conditions. Um, it gives some examples. Accessory structures are permitted in rear yards only. So the current standard that you all have carried over to the U D O. If that's what you all want. Minor site plan is required. This is essentially just a sketch showing where it's going. Total ground area may not exceed twenty-five percent of the rear yard. Physical form and use of accessory structures shall be secondary to and customary incidental to the approved use of the primary use. Accessory structures shall, shall not be used as a dwelling unit unless the structure is in full compliance with the requirements of the U D O and the building code. Floor space for attached garages, carports, or other space that is attached to the primary building shall be considered part of the primary building and are subject to the setback and other site development standards that apply to the primary structure.
What issue do you see with having it in the side yard? Do you see any problems with that? I mean, as I agree with Brad, there are situations where houses, to have a garage at the back, whatever, is, you know, just doesn't make sense. So I mean, I like the idea of having inside yards, but I'm wondering if there's any objection to that or if there's any going to be problems with that.
I'm opening the floor for conversation.
The, the instance I saw and, and they wanted to build a uh, a pergola could be an accessory structure, right? Or a, or, or a covered shelter one right near your house. And that's the one I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
Had to be moved to essentially the back of the building. But it made more sense to put it in the side of, it would have looked better. But I'm not saying there's not instances where you know, we don't want them like close to the front corner. I don't know if Mr. Moore has any input on that either way of why, why we wouldn't want them in there. I mean, I'm sure we can come up with instances. I don't, but.
You don't have an opinion?
It's just a thought. I'm out. Right. But you don't know why.
Well, if it was attached, you could put it in the front.
Correct.
So why can't you do it?
Right, yeah.
Detached, you know, if we're having attached in the front. Because somebody used to put the garage there and just put a walkway through. And it's literally, you know, in my opinion, I think it's crazy. You might as well just have it in the side yard. Right. But we could change that if we wanted to, have the setback at fifteen feet like it is for the regular house, whatever. And even though it's not attached, detached, I, I think it makes more sense to do something like that. But that you aren't encroaching on the other person's property either.
Still have the same side yard setback.
Yes, sir.
For the accessory structure. I, I mean, I think that would make sense.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
You'd probably make a lot of people very happy if you went more lenient on that. And I liked what, what Mr. Moore said about maybe increasing the setbacks.
Right, absolutely.
Do you want to put this as a topic for our next meeting to sort of do a deeper dive and do some um,
That would be good.
Sample. I don't know, we can kind of come up with some random sites and take pictures and do some visual simulations on why that may or may not be a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Hope everybody.
Good.
Okay.
Well, right now, when I put my carport in, the only requirement was, and it wasn't going to be attached, is it had to be behind my house. And that's how we worked it out. And it's over on the, if you want to call it, the side yard next to the street. What's the problem with that?
But it's at the rear yard though, it's the side rear yard.
Yeah, it's the rear.
Right. We're talking about bringing it, bringing it forward. That's in line with the house, if, if you want to do that, as opposed to going back. I mean, you still could put it back there, but we're trying to give them more options.
Well, I had the options. But some houses don't, so you got to figure out how, how you can meet that requirement.
Well, you wouldn't have been allowed to bring your carport forward in line with your house.
Huh?
You wouldn't have been allowed to bring your carport in line with your house in the existing ordinance. You wouldn't be allowed to do that.
It was behind, then that was fine.
Sure. But I, I think maybe some people would like to have it on the side, which I think to me makes more sense without attaching to the house. And I think if we keep that fifteen feet setback or whatever it is on the side yard, I think that makes sense. So you won't encroach on anyone's property as well.
And you, and you could kind of do a hybrid too of saying certain percentage, maybe all the way at the front. But it don't have to be behind the rear setback line. Like
Mm-hmm.
Rear sixty percent or rear, rear fifty percent or whatever you want to do. That way it's not like all the way at the front. I mean, it's just a thought.
From an aesthetic point of view, you probably wouldn't want it like
Right there.
On, in front of the house from the street view.
I, I think it has to be in line with the house.
Yeah, it definitely gets to be back behind the front, front line of the house.
Building line.
Exactly.
But maybe you could even back it up a little bit from there, possibly. But I, I know a lot of people will just simply connect something to a house just, just to get by with it.
Exactly.
Doesn't make much sense.
Right. Okay. Very good conversation. So if, if you guys are agreeable, we will make that as a topic at the next planning commission.
Sure.
All right. So what else under R1 would you all like to discuss, going back to our comparison table here?
Um, I'm wondering why the uh, parapet walls were removed and the ham radio, uh, ham radio aerials were removed.
Oh, boy. You've lost me there.
Okay.
All right. What do we talk about? The height?
In the existing uh, ordinances, they talk about parapet walls. We talk about the heights, yes.
Okay.
Height regulations.
All right. Maybe I'll just go to R1 and we'll get it. Okay. Area regulations?
No, it's height regulations.
Height regulations. Okay. Thirty-five feet, the height, and for maybe increased ten feet.
Come down and see parapet walls there.
Okay. Is it the last paragraph there?
Yes, ma'am.
Accessory buildings within eve height of twelve feet or more shall be located.
No, it's the one above, sorry.
One above, okay. Church spires, bell, frieze cup, cupolas, monuments, water towers, chimneys, flues, flagpoles, television antenna and radio aerials are exempt. Parapet walls may be up to four feet above the height of the building on which the walls rest. That's something you want to leave in?
Well, I'm just, because uh, the parapet walls on a structure, if you have a roof that's lower down, you have a parapet wall that sticks up and the roof's below that. So I'm just wondering why that was taken. So I'm just wondering why that was taken out of the, the new U D O.
Okay. So it looks like you're going to.
Not sure how to. Put verbiage that whatever, but I think, you know, we still need to look at it, I believe.
Okay, so what is our building height in the new U D O? It is. Sixty feet with stipulations for public and semi-public uses. So we're probably looking at mostly commercial buildings, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay. So do you think we're going to have an instance where it's going to be like that's the make or break for a commercial building?
I know we talk about R one here, so. You know, I don't know how much. But I was just curious to know why it was taken out, that's all. And I, to be honest, I don't know why I was in there in the beginning, but.
Yeah, well, we don't know either. So again, we're trying to simplify.
It lists everything else. I just wondered why that was in there and then it was removed.
Yeah. Probably because, and I don't want to say I know what's in John Ted, but probably because he was thinking we. More than likely would not have a situation where it would actually apply.
I mean, you might have a residential house that may have parapet walls there with a. Flat roof, but.
That's already fifty-five feet tall?
Not normally, yeah, right.
If you guys want us to write it back in, we will.
No, it was just a question.
What, what does the planning commission want us to do on that one? Do you want us to include the clause from the current zoning ordinance and put it back in about the parapet walls?
I, I mean, I don't think you need to. I was just, I was just questioning why, that's all. But I don't think it needs to be added back in.
Okay.
Unless I find something else that I think it. It may be detrimental, I'll take a look, but I, I don't think it needs to be added in.
Okay. Alright, everybody else good with that? The way it's written now? Okay. What else on R one would you all like to discuss going down through the list?
Again, with the building heights there, the public buildings. Why did it, was it taken out? Front and rear yards shall increase one foot for each foot in height. Um, you only have a side yard increased one foot in height. But not, uh, front and rear yards, uh, rear yards. And that's what's the existing ordinances.
Let's go to the actual ordinance. Go back up to. Okay, R one residential zone district standards and it says. Accessory building or primary building height, which one was it?
It's the primary one, but it's, it's with the.
Okay, so it's thirty-five feet, exception for residential structures, up to forty-five feet with one foot of additional side yard setback for each foot above thirty-five feet.
It is the public one.
Exception for public or semi-public buildings, up to sixty feet with one foot of additional side yard setback for each foot above thirty-five feet.
And then the existing one we had. It was front and rear yard.
Okay.
And side yard.
So here just has a general reference to side yard.
Right.
Okay.
I mean, it increases one foot for the side yard, but what about the rear, the rear and the front yard? I mean. Why was that taken out of there?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. This was, this was Mr. Wood's section, so. Do you want that put back in?
I do, yes, but I don't know what, how everyone else feels about it.
Okay.
But if, if I can get, if John can tell me why it was taken out. Then it doesn't, if it's a good enough reason, then we don't need to put it in, but I was just curious to know why it was taken out.
Alright, we can cover that at the next meeting if you.
Is it ordered that way through all those, through one, two, and three, or just one?
You know, I just looked at one, so I don't know. It may be the same in three, I'm not sure.
You're talking about in the proposed or the current? Proposed. So it looks like in the proposed in R two. Side yard.
And it's really just a public structure.
It looks like it carries all the way through, just going with the side yard. Do we want to look at the current? Zoning district? So where are we at? We are at. R one and it says. Setback regulations. Height. And you, you're concerned about public and semi-public, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sixty feet from grade provided that required front, side, and rear yard shall be increased one foot for each foot in height over thirty-five feet. I mean, at some point, if you're. Increasing the setback from the front, the side, and the rear, are you maybe going to run out of room?
I don't know.
I mean, if you think about it, you're, you're coming down on all sides.
I mean.
And so maybe that's why. John did that was because it.
But it seemed to work in the original notices because you've got schools that are. You know. That obviously they had to follow that.
You'd have to have a rather large lot. Right, for that standard to work. Because if you were trying to, if you were trying to work off of a smaller lot. And you were having to increase your setback from the rear, the side, and the front.
And again, it was just a question why it was in there originally and then it changed.
I don't know. Would, would Mr. Moore know?
Yeah.
Right. Right.
Right. But that wouldn't just be side yards, be front and rear.
Okay. Do you all want to rewrite it the way that it? Originally written? In the U D O?
I would unless, unless John has some. Some reason why not.
So do we need to wait until John comes back before we continue this further discussion or? Difficult, I'm sure for Elaine.
It's okay. I mean, we can, I'll make notes and we'll talk about it again. It's fine. I would think the more we talk tonight, the closer we're going to get to the next meeting. And we're not quite at an hour yet. I know we were going to try to keep it to an hour, but I'll, I'll go as long as you all would like to go this. Is there anything else from R one?
Uh, the setbacks.
Okay.
Um, again, you change it to thirty feet instead of forty feet. Again, it's just a question why that was done like that. And that's the primary.
For the front yard setback?
Yes, ma'am, that's primary.
Okay. Okay, well, let's look at the current language. I am on R one. I think that the standard was sort of the middle ground between all of this language that you're seeing here in the current Article six-three.
Right.
So. By using thirty feet. It's almost like he tried to hit the. The difference between twenty and forty.
Okay.
With all these stipulations that's written out. That's my analysis. I don't know if you all agree with it or not. I know in other places that I have worked thirty-five feet was a common front setback.
Right.
I don't think that's. You know, with your R one, it's not very dense, and so you're going to want to be further away from your right of way line in the front.
Right.
It's going to have more of your suburban feel.
Okay.
Are you okay with that standard? Did you want to make it?
No, I'm fine with that.
Is everybody okay with the thirty-foot front setback? Yeah.
accessory structures.
Okay.
Whenever it's more than twelve feet. Your setback has gone from ten to fifteen feet. Again, just know, want to know why that was changed as well.
Okay, well, let's look at that. Alright.
I'm sorry to keep bringing this up, but.
accessory structure. Does, does R one have a section on accessory structure setbacks? In the current zone district?
Yes.
Oh, it's in the use. Looks like. Okay, it says accessory building structures or other apparatus permitted as defined. However, garages, carports, or other accessory structures attached to the main building shall be considered part of the main building. No accessory building may be closer to any property line. As provided hereafter, with the exception that this shall not apply to an alley line. Accessory buildings are permitted in rear yards only. The total ground area occupied by accessory buildings may not exceed twenty-five percent of the rear yard area. Accessory buildings on corner lots may not be closer to the street line than the minimum side yard for dwelling on such lots. Minimum side yard. Slight dishes, antennas, larger than three feet, shall be considered accessory dwellings. So it looks like it's wanting us to use the same setback for the primary structure.
Correct, which is fifteen feet.
Alright. And then in the proposed U D O.
No, in the proposed one, it's fifteen feet. In the existing ones, it's ten feet.
Okay. So you want to go to?
No, I mean, I don't, I, I don't have a problem with the fifteen feet. I was just querying why it was changed, that's all. I mean.
I don't know.
Okay, alright, okay.
But I mean, if you all want to have it ten feet, we can put it ten feet. If you want to have it fifteen feet, we can put it fifteen feet. At the end of the day, most people don't go with the minimum setback.
Right.
At the end of the day, people are going to put their accessory structures where they want to put their accessory structure. But that is. Typically what it's saying is you don't want it any closer to the right of way line.
Right. I'm just wondering if on smaller lots that way, that would be. I mean, it's very rarely you get a structure twelve feet, but you may do, because depending on the slope of the ground and everything. And, um, I'm just wondering if that on a smaller. Lot, whether it's gonna, if we make that fifteen feet, whether it's going to be a problem or not. As opposed to ten feet, what it was before, because. I know now, I mean, five feet, as long as you're, you know, if you're only at eight and a half feet or.
Right. I mean, kind of getting back to what Mr. Moore said, you know, the taller you get, the more you're going to shade out your neighbor. And so I think that's why you typically are going to see. Larger setbacks when you have taller structures, whether they're primary or accessory.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, is there anything else from R one that you all want to talk about tonight?
I think I'm good. Thank you.
Is there, is everybody else good?
Oh, there was one thing, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Where, where do swimming pools come in? In R one?
Swimming pools, I believe is considered an accessory structure.
Who is it?
Mm-hmm, I believe so. Unless it's defined somewhere else as something else.
Do you have it right there? Does it state?
Um, let's, do you want to see current zoning or proposed?
Proposed.
Proposed? Okay, let's go to propose.
Isn't that where you are right there?
No, we're in current there.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, swimming pools. I'm going to go to the land use table and see if it calls it out as its own use.
I couldn't find it.
You already looked in the land use table?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Let's go to the definitions and see if it's just considered an accessory. We might not even be defined, I don't know. If it's not, we will define it. Alright. You think it probably, you think it'd be under swimming pool or pool?
Swimming pool, I guess.
What do y'all think? Anybody want to take a bet?
Swimming pool.
Can you just search?
If you press Ctrl and F. And type in.
Pool?
I'll tell you how many times.
Okay, so this is open space. And. This is probably in the P U D section.
It is.
You want me to go this way? Tractor side, this is the fence section. What section are we in here? Fencing and outdoor wall standards. So yeah, there would be, that would have to do with pools. Um, fence. Fence. Lighting. Parking. Carpooling. Okay, uh. Carpooling. Beekeeping. Okay, so that's for dog parks. Indoor recreation. Okay, that's a commercial pool. That's. And space. Alright, so I'm thinking it's probably an accessory structure. But how about I get clarification on that and we'll go over that at the next meeting?
If you pull up accessory structure, weren't it specify swimming pools in there or not?
Might. Want to go to definitions?
Yes, ma'am. Because it did with the carports.
Alright, so we'll look at pool first and then we'll go to swimming pools. I think we've defined everything else in here. I'm not seeing a definition under pools. I know everywhere else that I, that I've always worked, we've always considered pools a type of accessory structure to a residential use. Which would mean that your setbacks would be the same for an accessory structure.
Then it should state it in the accessory structure, shouldn't it?
Okay, probably. If that's, if that's what you all would like, is that what this planning commission would like? Is for it to be considered an accessory structure? Or are there some areas that you would rather not have swimming pools? Or are there areas that you would want different setbacks for swimming pools?
That. Maybe one thing you don't want in the side yard is a swimming pool.
Right.
I don't know if it needs to have its.
Its own use.
Yes.
As opposed to, yeah.
I, I would, I would think that would be a backyard use. I would, I would think that would be a backyard use.
Okay, so what we will do for the next meeting is we will. Come up with a definition for pools. We will include it as its own use in the land use table. And then. What do you all think? Maybe like a conditional use? And then we can talk about what conditions you want for swimming pools? Or do you want to just have a set setback for it?
What do you think, Brad?
As long as it's in the backyard, it's. You get overly wordy with it.
Right.
Well, think about what conditions you want for swimming pools. We'll take a stab at some draft language and then you guys can help us refine it. Does that sound okay?
Because it's not in the accessory structure there, is it?
No, and that was a good find. It does need to be addressed, I think.
While you're at that, you might want to add some. Or like, what is an accessory? Parkilla, covered filter, wherever the case be.
More examples?
More, yeah, and 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 specify within the definition.
Okay, there's a lot of.
Yes.
But I think that's good. Okay, well, how are we feeling about how far we got today? Are we, are we feeling feeling pretty good about maybe wrapping up tonight's conversation and carrying some of this over to the next meeting? Alright. There's a lot, yes. Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Being on, uh. Planning Department updates.
Okay. Just a few things that I just wanted to provide an update on. Alright, so um, for those of you who have not heard, Mr. Brad Litten has been reappointed to serve another term on the planning commission. So congratulations, Mr. Litten. We are so pleased that you're gonna continue to serve. Really enjoy having you on the commission and your input is extremely valuable, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Um, at the February tenth town council meeting, the town council increased the meeting stipend to two hundred dollars a meeting for members of the planning commission. Congratulations.
Wow.
Very well deserved and um, the one caveat, though, that's probably changed or may, may or may not have changed, I'm not sure. But if you do not attend, you do not get the stipend. We're gonna encourage the participation. Um, if you ever have concerns or questions about your stipends, so like, let's just say you didn't get a check or something like that. Just reach out to Miss, Mrs. Jones and she'll work with you guys on any concerns that you might have. Uh, the comprehensive plan, um, for a couple of years now, several of you have reminded staff that, yes, we do need to work on our comprehensive plan. It's extremely important for the town of Withfield. We have, John and I have submitted a request to the town council for a capital improvement plan project to do the comprehensive plan this year. So what that means is every year during the budget season, all the department heads submit to the town council their requests for capital projects. Because they're typically larger dollar values and they're a one-time type expense. What John and I would like to do is to sort of work it out arrangement with a consultant, whatever chosen consultant. That we do a lot of the like content creation to try to save money, but that we have a third party come in and help us with like the public input. Compiling the document into something that is very presentable and lots of pictures and graphics and very beautiful document. Um, so with that being said, we have submitted that for consideration by the town council. And as they go through the budget process, they will let us know if that's something they think they can fund this year. Um, as part of that, something that just recently came to light is, and Mr. Jones is here this evening, so he can comment on this. Um, downtown Withfield has identified a potential funding source, the downtown investment grant. Which is something through Virginia Main Street. It will potentially help fund, it's a one-to-one match, so for example, if we do spend as much as up to a hundred and fifty thousand on a comprehensive plan. It could potentially provide up to seventy-five thousand dollars to help with that. Um, what we would need to do, return, is that we would have a subsection in our comprehensive plan that would be like a strategic planned component for downtown Withfield. Which is something that they have wanted to do for several years now. So with that being said, as we present this C I P item to the town council, we are gonna present that aspect as well. And try to get some input and feedback from the town council members, whether they think that's a good idea or not. But because we may not see you all before the town council reviews this, I just wanted to get a sense from each of you. If you would be okay with the idea of partnering with downtown Withfield on. A a smaller sort of strategic plan component that would go along with our comprehensive plan. Is, would everybody be okay with that idea?
Yes.
Okay, right, so hopefully this will all come to fruition, but we will keep you updated. Um, another thing I just wanted to briefly mention is that the town council has moved to digital packets. So in an effort to improve efficiency and to become a little bit more sustainable. Most of the town council members are now not receiving paper packets, they're just receiving digital packets, so. If that is something that interests the planning commission, we can think about trying to transition slowly over to that. So you don't have to respond tonight, just give it some thought and we can talk about that at a future meeting if that's a direction that. The planning commission may want to go in. Okay, so those were all the updates that I had.
Are there any other further business before we adjourn?